Thank you for your comment.
Brenda, just one second. Jim, you think we can get them to turn that up a little bit? I got 7:47 behind me and it's, I'm deaf as it is.
Yeah, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place here. Do you want to hear or do you want to sweat? Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening. There we go. Brenda Wright, Cornwall Central Middle School, math teacher. I'm here to thank you that the air conditioning has been installed in the middle school this week. It came in timely. It has allowed us to have a conducive teaching first three days. We are so excited. I speak on the behalf of the teachers in my building. Thank you. It's been awesome.
All right. Hi, Victoria Halfpenny, or Stromiello as my children are known as. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for passing the code of conduct at the last board meeting. I was actually in Europe at the time with my husband and I got the news and I called my daughter all the way from Italy to tell her and she was ecstatic. She was so excited because she came last year on her own with her friends to advocate for something she believed in. I told her not to come tonight because I didn't think the issue would come up again. So she is at home. But I, on behalf of her, myself as a parent, just wanted to say thank you. I think you made the right decision. She was excited to wear her new clothes that she got over the summer and she just felt very, very confident when she got to school this year. Like she didn't have to worry about certain things. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you all for the comments. I will have to apologize here. I'm stepping in as the board vice president. Mr. Adeline could not be here this evening to take over the meeting. And I will say, we sort of dropped communication. I was not able to attend the last meeting. So I don't have follow-ups for Mrs. Palliata, but we will reach out to her and get her question answered. And I think I can answer, Mrs. Gottse, your question about who writes those, the reports that the student representatives read. I think typically the building principal writes those. The assistant principal may. Except for the high school, they write that themselves, right? Yeah. So for their building, they write it themselves. For the three elementaries in the middle school, the building principal is typically the person who's writing those reports. And I apologize if there's any other follow-up from last meeting. We'll go back and check that for the next meeting. We'll work with John on that. So that brings us to our next item on the board, which is committee updates. I know this will be probably very brief as we just named committees. We're actually voting to finalize everything later this meeting, but we'll just do a quick around the horn. Louis, do you have anything for facilities?
Nothing's really going on in the facilities. Yeah, no, everybody's apprised of the bathroom situation. It's not something that we take lightly or look at with ease. It's not something we want it to be, you know, participating in the first day of school. But it all has direction. The bathrooms do have directions. They have deadlines and dates. We are anticipating only a week with these bathrooms and you'll see them going online. There are second shifts working in our buildings to get all this work completed, again ASAP for our students. I had a brief walkthrough. I had a meeting with Harvey, myself, for facilities chair to apprise myself of kind of where we are so I can prepare meetings forward. And the opportunity presented itself to go to the buildings, you know, a brief visit. And I could tell you, the guys are working 100 miles an hour now. There's, it was a Monday visit and a Friday visit just to kind of get a snapshot of how things are moving and they are definitively moving forward. A lot of the bone, all the bones at that point within the wall, the infrastructure was completed and the close-up happens a minute after that. I'm going to meet, my intention is to meet with Harvey in the school year and in, you know, mid-September-ish to get the facilities committee off the ground with standardized meetings and really launch it. Invite some public members, invite other board members, administrators, you know, get that rolling. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. I'll just go down the list here as I have it in front of me so I don't leave it in the background. Audit committee, I'm the chairperson of that. Christian and Nina Ross, former board member, now community member on that committee. We have a meeting set for later this month, 20th, 21st, 20th, meeting with our external auditor. So we're also going to review the internal audit. Communications, Brendan is going to be a little delayed here. Louis, Christine, you guys are on that. Has a meeting been set for that yet? Okay, I'm sure in due course we'll get that set up. Facilities, we just handled. Policy committee, we're going to finalize that tonight, so no meeting set for that. I'm sure a meeting will be set up shortly. And visitation committee, Richard, any update there?
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. So we have set our first committee meeting for next Thursday, a week from tonight, September 14th at 7:00 PM at the Cornwall Central High School in room A21. The agenda for this meeting has been posted on the district website. A couple things on the agenda. We're going to be talking about and discussing our roles and responsibilities as a committee, discussing creating committee goals. And that will be presented to the board at a later meeting, probably the business meeting in September. And this year, we will, I believe, have two visits to the schools, one in October-November range and one in April-May. And we will, we won't shy away from reporting the realities we encounter, both the challenges and the triumphs. And we have plenty of successes in Cornwall. We should be proud of it. If you have any questions or need any further detail about the upcoming meeting, you can contact me, reach out to me. And the committee membership, which will be finalized tonight, I know at the last meeting it was Brendan, Bass, and Carl, I believe, along with myself. And I think we're amending it to have Bass and Carl with Brendan as our alternate, but that's still to be determined, I guess, in discussion.
So what I have here is you as the chair, Carl and Bass as members. And I think with visitation, and this has worked in the past, the idea of that fourth seat sort of being a rotating seat.
Right.
Because people are not able to commit to making potentially six to eight visits in a year during school hours. I know I enjoyed, a couple of years ago I got to visit as, hey, somebody can't make it, anybody have availability? And I was able to go on one visit and it was a really great experience, but I, you know, wasn't able to do it the whole time. So I think that the thought is that fourth seat is be kind of a rotating seat for whoever's available. So.
Right. That's how I envisioned it. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a great experience. Thank you.
Did I miss anybody? All right. And I guess one other item here as I look at, it's not a committee, but representatives to outside organizations. We have Larry Berger in the audience here, who is our representative for the Orange Ulster BOSI's Board. And he left us some handouts here and we just got an email with the same handout listing some dates in the fall and the spring with, to go visit BOSI's. I recommend, if you have not been, you go visit. We had a tour set up specifically for Cornwall. Was it last year, two years ago, whatever it was? I think we had four or five board members attend. So it's a very impressive facility and I recommend, if you haven't been lately, and you can make one of those dates that you make time to do so. Moving on to new business consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate. And that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So we have a recommendation from the Board of Education to approve the following consent agenda submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two through nine. Does anybody want to pull any of the items two through nine? Bass?
I'd like to pull five and six just for more, I don't know, maybe transparency with the community.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else want to pull any items?
I would like to pull two for a clarification.
Two? Anybody else? Okay, so can I then have a motion on items three and four and seven through nine?
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. All votes to approve three and four and seven through nine? Nope, sorry. Oh, we're going to, see, I knew I needed some help. Thank you. We'll go in order then, numerical or a Christian, item number two. Personnel actions, yeah.
So I don't know if this is something we can discuss. And if it's not, then we can move on. I just noticed that there was a rescinding of one of the appointments we made at the last meeting. And just to clarify, does that mean the position is currently open? And any other information since that seems a little unusual?
Are you referring to number 12?
I don't have personnel paper, but it was the ENL.
Number four. ENL CES.
If it's not appropriate to that in open session, I just was wondering.
Sure. Yes, I can speak to that. So simply, we had an appointment that was made in the spring and unfortunately, that individual was unable to join us and we're rescinding the appointment.
Thank you. So I guess a follow-up to that, is that position open or has it since been filled?
Yes, there's a posting on OLS and we are in the process of searching for that position.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on item two? Okay, moving on to items five and six. Bass?
Yeah, thank you. As I stated earlier for five and six, I just would like to have more information on these two resolutions, just in the scope of making everything transparent to the community. I mean, I think just reading the resolution as written itself doesn't cover enough. Maybe it's, I'd like, my question on number five is precisely, how was S, J, and associate selected? I mean, what is the norm? What do we do to select such a provider of services?
I can speak to that. So with regards to anything related to special ed, we always try to do an RFP. Some of the hurdles that we have is that there's oftentimes not a lot of organizations out there that do what we need them to do. Specific to S and J, we've used them in the past. They are not part of an RFP process because there's nobody submitting on them. So we approach them and this is for students that need these related services.
So we do not put out a request for proposals in that matter, for that matter?
We didn't do an RFP. We do have a contract that they provide us and we obviously look at their rates. We compare them to what others are charging. Everybody's typically within a tight range. If this was something exorbitant, we wouldn't obviously be putting it forth.
Right. I mean, you know, I mean, I do understand that sometimes there's soul source. In my experience, sometimes we go on a soul source, but it's not like, I just want to go soul source. We have to have the justification for going in that direction. So what were the justification again?
The justification is the high needs relative to the supply out there. There's not a big supply. We have a great deal of difficulty getting organizations that will provide these services. So the other constraint is that school is starting. We need these people in place ASAP because there's a legal requirement to do certain things that they do.
Couldn't we give it more time ahead of time? I mean, you know.
More time for what?
More time to run the process, due process, rather than saying, okay, we just started. We need the service right now.
We have done our due process. We've looked at them. We've spoken to them. PPS has done an evaluation of what they do and how they do it.
Okay.
To change, to go to a different process right now, we would go out with an RFP, which we typically do. We'd probably just get them and we'd be right back where we are right now.
Okay. And also at Harvey, this has come up in the past. A lot of these services, the rates are state mandated, right? So there's really not much of a difference between the different providers?
They, certain rates are state mandated. This particular one is not.
Got it. Okay.
These related services. You know, there are evaluations and assessments and things along those lines.
Got it. Okay, any other questions, Bass? Is that, do you have the same question for number six? Five and six, don't tell.
Number six, if I can move to number six?
Yeah.
Okay. So again, number six is, you know, choosing, we were talking about in agreement with the Center for Discovery, which is an out-of-district education school to provide special education instruction-related services to the district. Okay. Again, I mean, did we have other options or did we have more than one alternative and we chose this specific institution and why?
Right. Okay. So this is different from the other one. This is actually a facility, educational facility that students are placed in. And you have to keep in mind that the placement of these students is based on the results of the CSE Committee. So when you say, do we have choices, you have to understand the CSE Committee meets, they do their entire process, and then they have to go out and they have to find a facility that meets the needs of that particular student. There's many facilities out there. Not every one does the same thing. And then they have to do an intake. We have to provide information. Do they even want, or do they feel that our child is going to be the right fit in their school? So it's a little different and it is part of the legal process of the CSE Committee.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, any other questions? All right, I believe those are the only items that we had pulled. So I'll now ask for votes for items two through nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, motion carried. Onto section E here, new business, non-consent agenda. And item number one, superintendent's goals, discussion and approval. The goals are up. I printed a copy here, but the goals are up on board docs. This was discussed at the last meeting. So I guess the question is, are we okay to approve this as is based upon discussion at the last meeting? Or are there any last-minute comments, tweaks that we'd like to see here? Superintendent's goals.
I have a question, comma.
Go ahead, Bass.
Okay. As I indicated, I mean, in the previous meeting and even last year, I like the goals in general, the superintendent goals. But again, my question is, why am I not seeing math mentioned? You know, to me, math is, or should be on top of our priorities in proven math. And again, I mean, we can go and look at statistics and, you know, the standardized exams, results compared to other school districts and, you know, I do believe that math should be mentioned in the goals.
Yep. So as I said before, there's focus areas. All things are important. The same thing with the physical education of our students, the arts, special education, our English language learners. The list could go on and on. I could list all of them if it's a checkbox, but the actuality is the focus for this year are in these areas. So when I met with principals and admin, what was presented to our teaching staff and support staff, these are the focus areas for the district. If you were to ask any math department chair, they aren't ignored. They have goals within their department that they're working on every single year. So it's all how you kind of couch a focus versus all things. But in actuality, there's just not a focused professional development focused on math at this point. Right now, it's reading and then we'll move into math and science as the heavy lifts. The other thing I would just caution is you do not want to overburden your staff with too many initiatives and focus areas. It's overwhelming. So when we try to respect our staff's time and the resources, that's just where we landed for this year.
Any other? Christine?
I have a couple of questions, comments. I think last time we spoke about the specificity, the specificity, forgive me, of the goals. I really would like to see at the end of the year, what will be different that we can really measure and say, great job, right? And then I would also challenge, or I would like some data around, how are we lacking in the AP classes? Because that was a goal last year as well. And to your point, all kids deserve things. So are we truly lacking in that space? Are we behind the other people in the district? Because I would argue that there's quite a bit of that, at least from my viewpoint. But, you know, please, if I'm off, tell me. So I would just like to revisit that piece as well.
So we had that, we had an admin retreat, what, Megan, two weeks ago? Actually, Monday of board retreat, that day was our admin retreat. So for something like the second goal, enhancing instructional practices to increase the purposeful use of technology in the classroom, we talked about exactly that. What would that look like in a classroom? What would I see different by way of teachers' instruction and what our students are doing with devices? So an example would be, you don't take what was, what used to be a worksheet and just put it on a Chromebook. That's not purposeful use of technology. An example would be, we're all have read a particular text and four students are collaborating on a summary document that really synthesizes the text and they're all co-creating that, which requires collaboration. Look up from your device, communicate with one another. So we talked about exactly that. What would that look like, particularly at the middle school and high school level? Megan and I, with other principals, also went to professional development for ourselves with one of the leading experts in technology integration in schools, Eric Scheniger, written numerous books on the topic. And we might be partnering with him because he's done various rubrics and things that showcase how purposeful technology, what that looks like, and a walkthrough and things of that nature. To the comment, one is going to be, kind of the proof is in the pudding. Once that committee goes, you will see, you will see movement. So I'm excited about that. Number three is. It was a science research-based, mayor teaches it. But that was another huge lift where our students took it for the first time. So three additional AP courses in one year was pretty phenomenal. The reason why that's not a checkbox is teachers have to be trained to teach that course. You have to build it into your scheduling for the high school and make sure that we communicate how that's going to actually work. So increasing those opportunities. And it remains a goal for this year as we explore a way to expand opportunities for our students who take numerous AP courses and give up their lunch because they're that wicked smart and want to do that for their college and university aspirations. So that's where we're kind of focused on, in this expanding those course offerings. There's students who would love to take an arts course but don't have room in their schedule because of all the requirements deemed by the state. So we're just continuing to explore that. The specificity of what you would see is, like I said, a plus three. The specificity of what you would see is, like I said, a plus three in course offerings last year. I can usually just show, this is how many we had year one and this is how we move year two. The expansion at the high school, there's a lot of work that we have to get in front of the staff and the board to present, but.
I'm not questioning whether last year was.
No, 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 no.
I'm more, are we doubling down on AP courses again this year?
No. It's course offerings across the board. So there's students who need.
Oh, I thought it said AP.
No, it's just an expansion of high school course offerings.
Course offerings, it doesn't say AP.
Oh, my bad.
So it could be AP.
Maybe I saw a first draft and.
That's okay. So also, just to piggyback on that too, we're really focused as well on the kids who might be a little cautious to take a college course or an AP course.
Yeah.
You know, what can we offer them so they can dip their toe in the water to really feel, you know, like, I can do this, I've been, I've been successful in this.
Right.
And I may want now to try another course, maybe I do want to go to college. So that's kind of what Terry's talking about also, is the broad picture. Like, yes, of course, we have your highest of high and then, you know, we have kids who need the most support. Where are we in the middle? And are we, or do we have enough offerings for those kids right there?
That's what I was hoping, so, okay. Thank you.
Since we're elaborating on this specific goal, was calculus B and C discussed as an offering or not?
So when we say expansion of high school course offerings, we aren't putting any guardrails on that. We're not saying just AP, we're not just saying calc BC. But if we're listening to that one student who came to present, this is a way to potentially offer that in the 24, 25 school year.
Thanks.
And I'll say, Christine, you had a very smart point to say, how do we know? How do we follow up on this? Patient, did you do? No, but I think last year you gave us at a board meeting, patient, did you do? No, but I think last year you gave us at a board meeting, I don't know if it was just as part of a superintendent's update, sort of halfway through, here's a temperature check.
Midyear, absolutely.
And I don't know if that was a PowerPoint where you stood up and talked or just at the dais here, but I think certainly, you know, point one is pretty easy to talk about, but point two and three, potentially just a little more background information in a presentation mid-year. And certainly for point three, the timing there would dovetail very nicely with the budget process. So it would be a really, it would be helpful as part of the budget process and a helpful check-in on the goals. Richard?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I just, if I could just piggyback, I'm sorry that I wasted time on the AP thing, but I just genuinely worry that, you know, you'll, you come and say, oh, we did, we implemented this, this and this, but our thinking of what it was going to be is really different and people walk away disappointed. So I just want to avoid that. So even if it's just, for example, and sharing some things so that we have a texture around it, I think it'll be helpful as we go through.
Really good point. Yep. Richard?
Yep, thank you. So being on the board last year, a couple of things. I really like the goals that are in front of me. I think it's a good start. I think what we have to look at as a board, not just for superintendent goals, but for our own goals, is ensuring that they're more measurable. And last year, I don't recall a, a specific program that was in place to measure where we are with each of our goals. So I think it's important that each goal we have can be measured. And I get, we don't want to be too specific because then that handcuffs everybody. But at the same time, I think we need to be able to see where we are, to hold ourselves accountable and to show the community that we're making progress in these areas. So I think this year, we need to have either, whether it's quarterly assessments or yearly assessments, we have to have a program in place where we evaluate ourselves and our goals.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, Louis.
So the superintendent has his evaluation, super eval, that we voted in and accepted. And we had it mid-year last year and we had a final. So everybody did that on the superintendent, just to make sure that is clear. And as board members, we are, we should be having our reviews yearly.
We should conduct a yearly board self-evaluation?
Yeah, just in general.
Two years that I've been on the board, we have not done that.
Yes.
And this year, we will do that.
Yes. So to circle back to Mr. Dade's goals, I like the goals and specifically number three, the third goal, the last sentence, and expansion of high school course offerings. Contradictory to a district goal that we'll talk about in a moment, where it says, and continued lens to expand high school AP course offerings. I bring up, I bring up the disparity there because we heard from a single student last year about calc BC and a charge, a calc BC charge happened. Now, we didn't hear about the mid-math student who's having some trouble, who needs additional tutoring. That person didn't come up, so that charge didn't happen. We didn't hear about the kindergarten or the fourth grader, the third grader, who was having difficulty reading, so we needed additional pushing in that classroom. That charge didn't happen. Now, I'm making those other two scenarios up, but I want to make sure that we, we have a gambit of students, a wide rainbow of students under our umbrella here. I want to make sure, just because a student came up, that we don't lead a charge that's for something the district doesn't need. Now, I say the word need loosely. It would have to be evaluated by Mr. Dade and his team and the math department and I'm sure a litany of folks would take this evaluation into account. And if three kids needed the AP, maybe we can make an accommodation, figure out how we get them, that calc BC, that calc BC. But I want to make sure we're not losing sight of, as one of our goals, something so hyper-specific that is so hyper-focused that we lose sight on other students. So I just want to make sure that's, that's out there. So I do like, I do like that expansion of high school course offerings because it's important, it's dynamic, it's, you know, I'll use a sports team, you know? One year you have your District Nine champs and the next year you have a, you know, a two-and-seven season. Ebb and flows of the tides, ebb and flow of the education. It just makes sure we have a good pulse on what our students need and we are filling those, filling those voids. So I like your goals, Mr. Dade.
Thank you, Louis. I think we've heard from everybody. Christine, would you like to weigh in?
I have, I have many things to say, so I'm not sure. But I firstly, I want to respond to what Mr. Eugenius said about BC calculus, since I'm one of the people who did come up here and make public comment about it. And characterization that there was a charge simply because one student came up does not seem accurate. And I want to contextualize this. It was one student presenting a petition that I believe had 20-plus students asking for the course. It was teachers looking to accommodate that. And the idea that somehow that there's a, you know, what they call in economics, a lump of labor fallacy, that if you do one thing over here, it immediately displaces something else, is not accurate. And I've been in education as long as anyone on this dais. I have taught AP classes, I have designed AP classes. I think that how to do it is, you can do it, you have a certain number of students in a district at any given time, you have a certain number of staff, there are a certain number of classes. You can be creative. I've seen it done, other districts have it. And in fact, there was a parent of one of our student reps last year who, when he was found, heard that BC calculus was offered, was actually surprised. And I think you know who this person is, but like, the point is, that's a person whose background is in, you know, engineering education. And that we don't offer BC calculus makes us somewhat of an exception. And so when 20 students, not one student, come and ask for something, yes, you might say that's a squeaky wheel, and as a teacher, I hear many things. And I deal with students from high-flying students to students that struggle. And I don't think that helping one somehow deprives the other. So I just want to respond to that. Because I, one reason I spoke up is that I have done it myself in school districts and I think it's possible. And the fact that we are saying, I was, I spoke up because I did not feel that the board or the administration time was supporting it. That being said, that's one class. So that's not the goal that we were talking about, but because I was one of those people, characterizing as a charge for one particular class based on one narrow concern does not seem accurate to me. But onto the goals. I have several issues. The first one is that, my reading, these are not goals, these are kind of policies. And if, if I was to say they were goals, they don't meet the standards for what, what I think most people set for goals, as I've said in the last two meetings. And it's not that the acronyms are special, but the reason why SMART goals stands for specific, measurable and time-bound, which I don't think these goals meet. And this is why I think that's the case. First of all, each of these goals is a compound goal. There are a lot of different moving parts. And there's a reason why you can't pose a compound question at a trial because you won't know if the question's answered. And that's why it's important to be specific and you're not allowed to pose it that way. So the question is that, let's say we do well in next-generation standards but not in high school offerings. Was the goal met or not? It's hard to say. And that's why I think it's important to be specific. Second, they're not measurable. And I've read these over the last month since they were proposed. And I'm concerned because I was trying to think, you might have talked what success looks like. I'm a teacher, I can talk about what I imagine things to be, but I don't know what success is or failure. And particularly, that would make me hard, not just for me as a board member, but also for members of our community who want to know if we are getting closer or further away. Specifically, let's look at the second goal, which has to do with going to one-to-one in technology. It's not a goal to have technology. Technology is a means to an end. So the point is that if our students have computers, but there is a decrease in however you want to measure learning, that's not the goal, right? You've made the goal, the means has become the goal and not the goal, which is happier, healthier, more engaged, smarter, whatever we want as a student outcome. And that's why I think measures are important because if we are pursuing this and we don't achieve that, okay, you know, we're going to have drift. We're putting, let's say, getting the policy or the input as opposed to the outcome that we might want to look at.
Can I just address that? I just don't want to get lost in what you're saying. I've, I have spoken from the rooftops that the device is not the goal. I've said that last year, I said it to this board. I will not have that mischaracterized, that the device is the goal. I've said that repeatedly. The goal states, continue CCSD's transition to a one-to-one school district with a focus on the instructional practices to increase the purposeful use of technology in the, in the classroom. So it really is about what the students and the teachers are, how they're utilizing the technology to advance student learning. So again, I just didn't want to lose that point because I feel like it was a mischaracterization. I, I've said over and over again, 5% is just getting the devices, that's easy. I can buy devices easy and hand them out. It's what you do with them in the classroom and how students are advancing their learning. So I just, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to lose that part.
So I, I agree with you. And if you felt that's a mischaracterizing, I apologize. However, I was trying to use as an illustration that the goal is what, as you said, it's the outcome. It's what our students are able to do as a result of that. And that's not in this goal. I mean, I understand what you're pointing to in the language. I saw your previous year's language in the goal and the previous year before that, which leads me to the last point about being time-bound. And to be generous, the goals are this more or less a rewording of the goals we had in the previous academic year and the previous academic year, which means that it's hard to say whether we are getting closer to them over time. And as I said, that's why I think we need to make the goals more based on student outcomes and also have, you know, when we think we will achieve those goals. And it doesn't have to be immediate, but I think we can set a reasonable time. And they don't have to be one goal, they can be, say, look, we can meet four out of five, six indicators. And as I passed out to everyone on the dais, you know, I have my own same topics, but I think goals that actually meet that, including some of the language from the Effective School Board's initiative on goals in these areas.
So sorry, just to, are you, your handout here, you're proposing to put these for superintendent's goals or you want to put this into our next discussion for board goals?
I think the goals are the district's goals, for what we want in the district, whether we call them superintendent's goals. I think they're bar goals about how we conduct our business, which I think is pretty standard.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, you know, generally, in many places, they would call these district goals, not the goals of the superintendent. So like, to me, that's, I'm not specific, I'm not hung up on particular languages, what we call, I'm not, I'm not so much concerned about how they're termed.
And I share some of your concern with our overall, you know, again, this is my third year on the board now and we've, the way that we do this goals process, I don't know, I may quibble with your language a little bit about what's a goal and what's not a goal. And some of these goals are larger and sort of may creep into almost a mission for the year, a mini-mission. I think there's room to improve that process. I think that's a longer discussion and maybe we should revisit this sort of in the spring and kick it off a little bit earlier after we do the budget to get a head start on next year. I guess just in the interest of kind of the system that we have now, I think we already had discussion about the superintendent goals last meeting. I think we're at a point maybe to vote on those and we should move this, some of your language here into discussing the board goals. I don't think we're at a point when they, these items have already been discussed. And again, I was not physically present at the last meeting, I did watch it on YouTube on the replay, to sort of throw out the goals and rewrite them, you know, when they've already been discussed and as, at a meeting as a body of the whole.
Okay, so, point taken. But let me just add two things because there are some things about, you know, the format and how I think we should do goals and I will, I think your process is reasonable. And that wasn't the main point, but I also think there's some things that are, that should be goals that are not present on the goals as they're written now. And the first one is, what I added is to have the goal, a goal similar to we had last year for UPK. And I think that is a target for full implementation and a timeframe to do that. And I think that is something that many people in our district think is important and support. And I think that's something that, one of the reasons why we weren't able to roll it out perhaps, and I will, correct me if I have details wrong, was some of the logistic issues of not having spaces or providers available to expand as quickly as we'd like. And I think having a plan for how that's going to go together will help us solve those bottlenecks if they appear as we expand the program. And secondly, I do think the collaboration goal that I put, gave to you, I think is important. And this language is directly from the Effective School Board Initiative.
What collaboration, one Christian, I'm sorry?
On guard. On guard rail three that I have.
Oh, I was just looking.
So I guess I'd like to propose, since we had comments from everybody and it seemed as if most folks here are in general alignment, that we vote on these goals as written and we take up some of your language here as we move into the next item, the discussion of the district goals. What?
Without our discussion, I certainly use my time. You know, there is a time for deliberation and there's a time for decision.
Yeah. So let's, Richard?
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment, if, and I could be mistaken, at the last board meeting, there was, there was some discussion and I believe a couple of people brought up that they would like to see the goals more measurable. So I just want to put that out there, that I think that was put on the table and it's the, we have the same goals now. Thank you.
I would just ask for examples. So during our board retreat, the handout that was provided to the board did not have a single number on it. And that's from NISBA, the state organization for goals. So I think we can indeed quibble about what is or is not a goal. So when we look at number two, when I described how it would be measured and next steps, I'm not quite sure how we go against a leading expert in the field that has done this work with district after district across the country to say how he's assessed how, and worked with teams to figure out how you move from point A to point B. So I'm just a little confused about what might we add to make that more measurable. Knowing that I stated on the record that that was kind of the next steps, there's a process that goes along with professional development for staff and things of that nature. So if you can give me a number of how I might quantify an increase in purposeful use of technology, I'm all ears.
I don't think it has to be a number per se. I think when people talk metrics, that's what they assume. But even on goal number two, for instance, I think it's easy enough to reword it to meet Christian's request as well, to say, to start with, increase student collaboration and engagement through the use of integrated technology within the classroom as demonstrated by dot-dot-dot. And it's going to take time for that to happen, but if we can say. And it's going to take time for that to happen, but if we can say these things are being implemented, that's step one. And the action and what the goal is to increase collaboration and engagement, that's the goal. So, I mean, I think it's just getting lost in the words.
So having done this work before and, you know, where the board probably should go with a strategic plan that really kind of sets those long-range goals where a superintendent then follows. Strategic plan says by 2030, we will X, Y, or Z. Then you kind of backwards map in year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five, what are those outcomes? What are those benchmarks? So we've done that in Fairfax County. They have a beautiful strategic plan that had all stakeholders engaging in that. And then the superintendent makes it happen. Like was said at the board retreat, you set the direction and then I and my team make it happen. So I think we have to get better at, like Jim said, what does that whole year process look like so that, I've already met with the staff, these are the goals. We can tweak and modify and I can put more meat on the bones, but superintendent's conference day is done. My philosophy is you don't shift gears after you've already met with principals, assistant principals, directors, and given direction to the staff. So I think, just to move this along, following what I've experienced in other districts is, the goals can stand as is, but I'll provide more details of what success would look like under, you don't couch that on in a goal. You're going to have an essay for each one, but I like what you're saying, just more specificity of what that would look like. What Louis mentioned, that is already accomplished in my evaluation, but how do we make it more forward, front-facing? Because I do provide the board with specific examples of how we've moved each area forward. It's at the end of my evaluation, goal one, goal two, goal three, and goal four. So I can add those metrics as I meet with my team. Not numerical metrics per se, but what does success look like?
I just want to add, and again, reiterate what, Richard, remind us all of, like, lost time. We talked about these goals. We talked about metrics, like how to measure the level of, you know, success meeting each goal. The metrics should not be complicated, should not be difficult. And I want to throw like an idea right now. Take a baseline, right? And then, the baseline is the pre and what you're doing right now is the post. Pre versus post would tell you what the difference is and that is measurable. If you want to go to high school course offering, you say the baseline is year 2018, 2019, for instance, school year, right? We had 20 courses offered, now we have 25. So it should not be complicated. When you set the baseline, what is the baseline and what are we doing? And do the comparison. I mean, and this applies to everything, like, you know, like when we say, like, number one, diverse the equity inclusion. Take a baseline and show what did you achieve compared to that baseline? You know, any aspect, I mean, this is kind of like, like, very bottom line data analytics. It should not be complicated. That's all I'd like to say, you know?
For me, I just don't want to, I just didn't want to insult the board. I mean, we don't have a committee. We will have a committee. We'll meet continuously over the years. So I can, I can do that. But again, I'm going to stress the importance of the board really engaging the community and stakeholders because when you say, we need a math goal, I'm not sure the whole community will rally around a numerical number on a state test. I'm personally against it. I think state tests are somewhat important, but we had seniors, all of our seniors didn't list a single state test on their college application and they got into Ivy League institutions. So I think that work's important for the, to really hear from the community of what does success look like for our students. And then the superintendent really takes that roadmap and just comes up with measurable goals that get us to those pieces. So again, I'm kind of doing it reverse because the current state is the current state. But when we say something like implement full pre-K, that would never be a superintendent goal. That is a district goal because show me the money. I can never say we will fully implement by X. The board has to make that happen. You have to convince the voters that they will pony up the money to make a four classroom modification at one of our buildings. So I think a nice next step while we get our act together with what a full cycle should look like is just adding some more details to what success would look like for our current goals. And then, you know, starting that long-range planning to see really what is the community interested in for, you know, that portrait of a graduate? What do we want our graduates to look like and the skills that they should possess when they, by the time they walk across that stage in the June of their senior year?
Yeah, I, one last comment and try to be very quick. Data, data comparisons like pre, post, before, after, you always have to make sure you're comparing apples to apples, right? Kind of, and let's use my example, like when I do energy, for instance, you normalize the data per square footage, you normalize the data per weather. To say, this summer I spent a lot more on or a lot less on electricity compared to last year, therefore, oh, I did a great job. Well, maybe last year was a lot warmer than this year, right? So there's the normalization of the data. Apples to apples, you do the comparison, you easily prove the delta where kind of, you know, goes towards achieving the goals. So again, what I'm saying is the setting the metrics and doing the comparisons, apples to apples, should not be complicated.
It's actually quite complicated.
I'll say it's very complicated.
It's very complicated because I could say I increased five classes, but they could be no-brainer classes that don't have an impact or add value. So it's, it is really more complicated. So I can go 20 to 25, but those five classes are meaningless. That's really not what we're after, right? We're after things that add value. So it is, there are layers to it that are really complicated. I suggest that we, you know, move on, but I would like to put on, no, I really think we should step back and do this strategic planning as a board because that is how businesses run, that is how organizations run, and they trickle down. And if we haven't been doing that, I think this is a good opportunity to embark on that as a team.
I agree. So.
I'll just jump in real quick, best. Yeah, you know, no, relative to your comments, you know, you mentioned about metrics, before and after, pre and post, all 100% valid. That's in his review. So in his review, it talks about advancement of third and fourth grade, advancement of middle schools, advancement of high schools, adding the classes, his performance with adding UPK. And we all commented on that and he, and Terry, I said, he, sorry. And Terry provided milestones and he, you know, documents, here's what I did to get to this. So I floated this out as my goal. Here's what I did to achieve it or further it. And if I recall, most were highly effective or very effective or whatever the top two ones were.
Well, I think that's some of the problem too, is that the board doesn't know what's been effective. And I think, you know, that's what we need to hear more of. And Terry, I just, just correct me if I'm wrong here, we did have a learning loss, right? Last year, over the last few years, if I'm right. And you said something that the state tests, you're not so interested in that. So what do you do to gauge your success as far as correcting this learning loss that we're experiencing? And it's not just here, it's all over. But, so you need, you do have that gauge, I'm sure, right? And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's basically what the board is looking for so that we can present that to the community and say, this is where, hey, we had issues here and this is where we're now more successful at. I think that's, if I'm getting it right, that's what everybody else is looking for.
Yeah, I just want to give the ending away. Learning loss is not new. Having been a principal for a long time, a teacher for a long time, we always worried about learning loss over the summer, over extended breaks if a student's coming in. So again, I challenge the board to engage our community to make sure that we're not making something more of. And I'm not going to, I'm going to give my opinion, but my opinion is that you engage our community to see if they want to put all of their eggs in increasing from 87% to 90% on a state test. Just ask that question of a roomful of parents and I'll take whatever data you get, but I'm just, as a parent in this district and in one of the top districts in the country where they don't say a single metric about a state test. They talk about the critical thinking skills, that our students must be great collaborators, that they must be great communicators, global unethical citizens, and things of that nature. Things that we know that they need to be successful. Gone are the days of getting an A for memorizing the information that's needed for a test. I can show research after research that you can have a high school student take a test and ace it on September 17th, give them that same test on September 24th and they bomb it because of what we do. So I'm just, all I'm saying is I have my strong opinion about state tests. I have a strong opinion about where the whole country is moving with regards to that as an important or not important metric. So when it says, what do I deem successful, you will not, never see that in one of my goals. I will, I will do that if the board sets that as a strategic goal after engaging staff and the community around that. Last thing is I sat with middle school students for the Blue Ribbon Commission. They came to visit middle school students at CCMS and they said, what would you like to do more of and what would you like to do less of? They said, less testing, more hands-on group projects, working with one another because this is what we're going to need for our future. So again, I think it is going to be eye-opening when you do indeed, when we engage our parents about what they want their children to experience. Because I've seen the converse is when you hyper-focus on state tests, we become a drill and kill factory of, let's shut everything down in the two months leading up to the state test because the board's looking for us to increase these rates and drill and kill until we get the numbers. So again, it's not what I'm looking for. I think, like Christine said, we need to take a step back, look at what our community is looking for by way of student success and then go from there.
So, because we don't like mischaracterizations. Because you use a test as a metric does not mean the test is the goal. It means it's an objective metric and you can see differences. So if there is more, it's not saying how you have to achieve the learning. It's a learning, it's a test we have to take anyway because the state provides it. It's a cheap metric because we're going to generate that data just by the course of doing business. And it's something we can track and everyone can see it, it's in the state report card. Some metrics, I think, looking, for example, at the difference between the performance of our special education population and our general population. So just some numbers. One, four, five, five. Which of those numbers stands out? It's one. So there's indicator 3D on special education, which is on our, you know, our school report card. It's a difference, the gap proficiency between our general population and, let's say, our special education population. Out of those six areas that they track, not just here in New York State but throughout the country, okay, we only meet one out of those six. And I'll give a compliment, because the one the last two years has been high school math and we have a high school math teacher in the audience. But Newburgh, it's five out of six. Monroe Woodbury, five out of six. Washingtonville, four out of six. And what that indicates though, overall, is that perhaps we are not doing enough and we need to target more resources to our special education population. It's not because, hey, I can, I was a former social scientist, I know a lot about data, I've written about that, I've talked to people who talk about how you can manipulate data and I've been a teacher for that, that period. So I'm not talking about going back to high-stakes testing. But I think the point is that these are metrics, if you want to develop in-house metrics of learning, I encourage that and I will vote to support the resources to develop those metrics so that the community can see them and report them. And I'm all for qualitative metrics. And it's not about raising it to a certain level. I'm saying that we should return to a 2018, 2019 level that we've already achieved with the same population, with mostly the same teachers, with the same resources. And we should see some return to that over, let's say, an arc of time. And if we're not, that would be an indicator that we need to reassess what policies, what approaches, what frameworks, and how we're educating our students. And the point is, if it's going in the, I'm not saying about raising two points, I don't think that's worth it. I've told many students that, as I look at their grades, that the two points on this assessment is a fraction of a point on your total grade that no one will care about ever. The point about it is that it's an indicator of whether we're getting closer to that or not. So I'm all for better metrics and better, you know, things, but I think that they should not just be, happen when we have the superintendent evaluation, it should be the community so the community has some sense that this is what progress looks like. In July, I shared an email with everyone on this dais where I showed, you know, the frameworks developed by the Effective School Boards Committee and H.J. Craybill, who's on the Texas Educational Agency. I would refer you to the Menand School District, which has, I think, a really good and well-developed set of goals in the capital region and New York State, or the Columbus City School District. There's many examples. Normandy in, near St. Louis in Missouri, it's not an unusual thing and they're not all quantitative and they're not all test-based. My point is, you can do that. If you think giving, going to one-to-one and having more enhanced lessons is a way that promotes learning, I'm all for that, but we should see the learning. And that's where we should see that. And if it's not, I mean, as a teacher for over 20 years, I've seen school districts waste a lot of money on technology and then scrap it and get rid of it. And, you know, the best lesson I taught this week was just with one piece of paper. So the point is, you can educate with technology, without technology. The question is though, we want to see the outcomes that we all talked about as we were going around. I will, and so the point is, is one is that it's seeing the gap between our own students and our own students on the same test. That's not about raising the overall level and that's something that's harder to goose. I do want to reiterate that I do think that UPK should be added to our goals, as it was one of our goals last year, and I think that's a simple and easy addition to the goals as written.
So, we just got word that the high school's power is out, storms are coming this way. So we're going to expedite the end of this meeting. So here's what I'm going to do. I think we've more than exhausted our discussion on superintendent's votes, on superintendent's goals, so let's take a quick vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, so I'm sorry, we have one, two, three. Carl, what was your?
I'm sorry.
Superintendent's, superintendent's goals. Approve? Okay, so, motion carries with four. The BOE committees is just sort of a pro forma, really, I'm going to skip ahead to item three and then I'll skip back to item two before we close up shop here. Item three, really the only change from last time is that, excuse me, what committee? The Policy Committee, we had six people, two people backed away, so we now have the four. So if we can take a vote on just approving the committees and assignments, all in favor?
Motion, second.
Sorry, motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I have discussion.
Discussion?
Very briefly, very briefly.
Very briefly?
The scholarship, well, that was removed as a standing list.
Yes.
Will we see a vote for that scholarship in the future to implement it? Last year we voted on it, its implementation?
I think it's a standing scholarship. I'm not sure what.
Last year, when it was introduced, we voted on to apply it to 21, 22.
Okay.
Last year was 23. We voted and applied it. I just, are we going to?
We'll do that in a future meeting then.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
All right, all in favor of item three there? Committees?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. So for board goals, I know we were slated for discussion. We're going to try and not run out of power here and beat the weather. So here's what I'm going to propose. Last, so we have last year's goals and what it says are district goals were really the superintendent's goals. So we can basically X those out because they're different. We have board goals here and I think one thing that I took away from our board retreat is that this is sort of not public business, but how the board functions. So this is a discussion that we can carry on a little more over email than we had thought in the past. So from a draft perspective, look at last year's goals, ignore the district goals. If you have any changes in language to the existing goals or you would like to add new goals, as Christian did, please email that to John and myself and we will create a working document where we're all kind of combine everybody's thoughts into one. And then we will share that back out and we will discuss that at the next board meeting. Is that any, is that a reasonable plan for everybody? So there's really nothing to vote on for that. Go ahead, Christine.
When they, when we send them, can we send them to everyone so we're not repeating something that was already sent?
I guess in light of what we were in the last meeting, your thoughts? I guess in light of what we were in the last meeting, your thoughts can be sent to everybody, sure. Yeah. So we'll, we'll do that, we'll sort of, you know, we will discuss it in public, so we're not going to go down the rabbit hole back and forth, back and forth, but if you have a suggest, an update or a new suggestion, please email that, and John and I will try to cobble that together into a draft, which we can discuss at the next meeting. With that, I think that was the last new business item. Let me go to my, because I skipped three and two, or I switched three and two. Last is public comment, does anybody like to make, would like to make a quick comment, or? No? Wonderful. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, thank you very much, and we will see you in a week and a half, not even two weeks, right?